Good evening, everybody. The Falkir County School Board meeting is called to order and at this time, Mr. Bland, would you like to lead us?
Absolutely.
Right step above, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Callahan, if you would, please take the roll and record and we will move to the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Okay.
Motion. Motion and a second that the school board adopt the agenda as written. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And motion carries. And we will move to the special presentation for the evening. Falkir High School chorus teacher, Ms. George, will introduce students who will perform Christmas songs for us.
Good evening. This is the Falkir High School Local Ensemble, some of the members. And this is our select women's choir. And they're going to perform three songs for you. The first is actually an African-American song that we thought we would do. Melody followed by a Hanukkah song and then a popular children's Christmas song.
(Singing) See a hampe, gukane, ni kweikos. 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 We are marching in the light of God. We are marching in the light of God. We are marching, marching, we are marching, we are marching in the light of God. We are marching, marching, we are marching, we are marching in the light of God.
(Singing) Oh, Hanukkah, oh, Hanukkah. Oh, Hanukkah, oh, Hanukkah, come light the menorah. Let's have a party below the tazvora. Gather round the table, I'll give you a treat. Trade us a play with the nuts we need. And while we are playing, the candles are burning. One for each night, they shed a sweet light to remind us of days long ago. Hanukkah, oh, Hanukkah, come light the menorah. Let's have a party below the tazvora. Gather round the table, I'll give you a treat. Trade us a play with the nuts we need. And while we are playing, the candles are burning. One for each night, they shed a sweet light to remind us of days long ago. One for each night, they shed a sweet light to remind us of days long ago. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry. Better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. He's making a list and checking it twice. Gonna find out who's naughty and nice. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping. He knows when you're awake. He knows if you've been bad or good, so be good for goodness' sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry. Better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town. He sees you when you're sleeping. He knows when you're awake. He knows if you've been bad or good, so be good for goodness' sake. Oh, you better watch out, you better not cry. Better not pout, I'm telling you why. Santa Claus is coming to town.
We'll just pick up where he left off, okay?
Yeah, I don't think so. Okay, we will move to announcements. There will not be a school board work session in December. And the January Finance Committee meeting has been canceled. There will be a school board organizational meeting Monday, January 6th, at 6:00 PM in the school administration conference room. There will be a Health Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, January 8th, at 8:00 AM in the Central Complex Building Conference Room. There will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, January 8th, at 5:00 PM in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. There will be a School Support Council meeting Wednesday, January 8th, at 7:00 PM in the school administration conference room. There will be a Personnel Committee meeting Thursday, January 9th, at 8:00 AM in the school administration conference room. And the next school board meeting is Monday, January 13th, at 7:00 PM here at Falkir High School in the Falcon Room. And we move to response to Citizens Time, and I do not believe there is a response from last month. So we move to Citizens Time, which is a time for community involvement, which is an important component of a successful school division and the school board welcomes public input. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. Matters relating to personal or personnel issues cannot be discussed. And I believe I've got two names. The first, Roger Miller, if you would come to the podium, please. State your name and magisterial district.
I'm Roger Miller and I live in Center District. On April the 8th, 2013, I spoke to this elected school board on behalf of nearly 1,000 Falkir County residents who signed a petition in opposition to the previous administration's plan to cut 43 percent of music and PE class time from our middle schools programming. Thankfully, you, our elected representatives, heard the voices of your constituents and did not endorse the plan that was presented last April. Thank you. In the eight months since then, Dr. Jekk and his administration have been diligently working with and seeking input from parents, students, and music teachers in an effort to reach a compromise. If there's one thing I've learned in 28 years as a real estate broker, it's compromise. Rarely do both sides of a real estate transaction get everything they want. The norm is a compromise that both the seller and buyer can feel really good about in the end. Such is the case with the compromise that is being presented tonight under this revised plan. PE classes every day for all middle school grades will remain intact. Music classes every day for 8th graders will remain intact. Music classes for 6th and 7th graders every other day will be offered equitably countywide. All 6th and 7th graders will now have access to exploratory courses and music. All students will have more instructional time in core classes. Program offerings will become truly equitable throughout all middle schools in Falkir. There are three other very important benefits not mentioned in tonight's proposal that have emerged through this public debate that I consider victories for all involved. First, you, our elected board members, chose to do the right thing last April by listening to your constituents and not endorsing the original plan. Second, Dr. Jekk and Dr. Mitchell chose to do the right thing by thoroughly evaluating all the options available, even those presented by parents, versus implementing a programming policy that had no input from or support from the taxpayers of Falkir County who pay the administration's salaries and fund our great schools. Third, and most importantly, this board's and this administration's willingness to hear the voices of those you serve has helped restore our trust in you. So thank you for working with us even though by policy you weren't required to do so. Your willingness to include us in the process produced an end result that I think we can all be proud to have been a part of. Plus, it builds a foundation of trust in each other to be able to work together on future policy or programming changes. Soon, I'll be contacting the petition signers to personally thank them for the instrumental role they played in making this compromise possible. Also, I ask them to embrace this compromise as a victory for all Falkir County middle school students. In closing, I'd like to wish everyone a very blessed Christmas and prosperous New Year.
Sally Murray, Center District, I believe.
Yes, Center District. For the election on November 5th, in partnership with Falkir County Public Schools, the Electoral Board and General Registrar's Office introduced an election page program for students in high school government and capstone classes. The purpose was threefold: to provide assistance to election officials at the polls, to give students an opportunity to learn about the election process, and to provide students with volunteer service hours for which they will receive a certificate from the Electoral Board. Both students and precinct chiefs completed evaluations of the program. All were positive. Though one concern expressed by both students and chiefs was that what the students could do was limited. This is because of restrictions imposed by Virginia election law. I am here this evening to thank Falkir County Public Schools for their participation and support in the launch of this program. Thank you, Dr. Jekk, for your letter to high school principals urging them to promote the program. Thank you, Dr. Downey, for meeting with retired teacher Ben McCartney and me, and for arranging for government and capstone teachers to meet with us to learn about the program. Thanks to the teachers who distributed applications and provided a teacher's recommendation. Thanks, too, to the students who served as pages. Most of all, thank you for Ben McCartney. Although he is retired as a full-time AP US Government and AP and introductory psychology teacher at Falkir High School, he still fills in as needed at our high schools and teaches psychology at Mountain Vista Government School. Ben was extraordinary. I just thought he was going to help me and ended up, I just occasionally edited something he did. He researched page program materials from other localities, developed the student application, training materials, and evaluation forms, determined precinct assignments, conducted the training class, and attended several meetings with Electoral Board as we developed the program. Ben provided the added benefit of knowledge of what happens at a voting precinct because he is an officer of election at a polling place. We cannot thank him enough. The page program is an example of what can be accomplished when government and schools work together for the benefit of students. Thank you again for your participation and support. And I apologize for leaving early, but I have the very questionable privilege of, as a member of the Electoral Board, helping to supervise the recount in Falkir County. Tomorrow, I have to be at Central Elementary or, you know, Maurenton Community Center at 6:30 in the morning, and Duke is playing basketball as we speak. Thank you.
More importantly, right, Sally?
Excuse me, I didn't put my name on this, but I would like to make a couple comments, if that's all right?
Sure.
My name is Ann Mash and I am in Mr. Bland's District Marshal, and I am talking about the band hours as well. I am asking actually for maybe one more compromise, because compromise does make a lot of sense. First, I want to tell you why band means a lot in our family. I have a son in 7th grade and he's in band, and the year before he started middle school, I was listening to a guy associated with American University discuss college admissions. And he was talking about how if you look on any football field, there's more guys or there's more kids in band uniforms than football jerseys, and that a lot of scholarship money is written for the band members because they're in demand, more so really than the football players. And that's when I really first started thinking about, you know, this is an avenue I really I do want to pursue for my kid because really, he may not go to four-year university without some scholarship money. So when he started 7th grade and he, or 6th grade, rather, and we went before the band teacher, I told him, this is really what I'm hoping for, that, you know, you can direct my son towards scholarship in band. And he said, well, first, let's see if he's got any aptitude. And I had read that brass was the way to go, and I was real happy when my kid showed aptitude for the tuba. And so in 6th grade, if you've ever had a kid in band, it's an absolute nightmare to listen to them practice. I mean, it's horrible. He's in 7th grade this year and it's become quite pleasant. And I realize 7th grade is really where they become musicians, in my opinion, at the middle school level. And leaving the 7th graders out of that full-time schedule, I think, is going to be detrimental to them, tangibly detrimental. I think band has tangible benefits that I would love for the board to consider. They learn what it means to have a boss. The band teacher is a boss, more so than any other teacher. I mean, if the band is out there and one kid sounds terrible, the whole band gets hurt. You know, it affects the sound of the band. They learn what it means to be part of a team. They learn what it means to be center stage. They learn what it means to fade back. I think it's an extremely valuable class for the kids that are there. I think there are real benefits, aside from the fact that it's the arts, which always seem to go on the cutting block, although I understand this is not a financial decision, but I hate to see the arts go on the cutting block. I would like to see the board stand up for the arts in band in particular. And one of the things I'm really puzzled by is that my kid has four core subjects. Then he has PE in band, and he's got two things called enrichment and seminar. And as far as I can tell, enrichment is what we used to call study hall. They read in there. And I don't understand why, if you need to cut minutes somewhere, why are they not cutting the minutes from enrichment when seminar is very similar to enrichment? So you have two classes that are really not particularly academic, and you're sacrificing band hours for that. And that doesn't really make sense to me at this point unless it's to give teachers free time, which I understand and respect, but not at the cost of music, not at the cost of band, not at the cost of something real for the kids. I have this feeling that enrichment is really about the teachers and the staff. It's not about the kids. Kids should be reading at home. Kids who are readers do read at home. Thank you.
And if you could leave your information with Ms. Callahan. Okay, now we move to reports, and we'll start over here on Mr. Gorg's side this evening.
You have before you tonight the minutes from our October Finance Committee meeting, I believe, or is it our, excuse me, our November Finance Committee meeting. I do want to say that one important thing that we did talk about during our Finance Committee meeting was the role of the CIP plan. And in the Finance Committee, we've had some concerns over really what it means, what it represents, and we did have a very good discussion about that, that it's more than a plan, it's a set of priorities that we're looking at. And recognition that maybe not everything is feasible or doable, but I think we came to some pretty good conclusions during that meeting, that we were both, Ms. Wolf and I were both very happy to kind of come to those conclusions. So as we talk about CIP in the next couple of months, particularly this month, I think that that's something our committee discussed, and I'm glad we came to that conclusion. It's really a set of priorities, maybe not necessarily a plan that we can act on.
All righty.
Okay. Nothing much has changed in the Building Committee meeting, therefore, we do not have a meeting for December. From the Personnel Committee perspective, there are two items of interest that will be discussed tonight. One would be a resolution to award the short and long-term disability insurance to a group called The Standard, and I'm not going to steal your thunder, and I'll let you discuss that later. And also, the request for new bus aid positions. We'll come back before the board tonight for further discussion.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. All righty.
I just wanted to say on Friday, I attended the Bright Stars Head Start ribbon cutting, and I really think everyone should make it over to the classrooms there. They're really outstanding, and the director, Pat Washington, is invited to board to come visit when the children are there. So I'm going to contact her if anybody wants to come with me. I would love, and it's really an outstanding program that is really helping a lot of children in need in the preschool area. It was great. The School Support Council, I just wanted to make everybody aware that the group is investigating, it's a parent-led group, it's investigating the idea of having middle school and high school students start at a later time. What they're, they may be doing a survey, but just so you're aware, that some people in the public may be confused that it's coming from the school division. They may be doing a survey, but I'm not quite sure what they're doing next. They have a committee investigating. And I know there may be a lot of questions for transportation in regards to that. The other thing the School Support Council did that I really want to acknowledge them for is they really brought a lot of input for the calendar. Each rep from each high school or each school, excuse me, took, brought input from their school and their parents, and that was really helpful. On the Health Advisory, the Falkir County Mental Health Association has been, they go around the room at the Health Advisory Committee meeting and has a lot of the health departments there, the mental health departments there, the hospitals there, so it's a really great place to find out what's happening with health in the county. But the Mental Health Association held October trainings for treating anxiety in adolescents, and they had a very large number of people in attendance, so that's a good thing for Falkir. And they are also working on to offer safe date training for students, so they're working on a program to provide that. Mr. Finn also said at the meeting that all of our psychologists and counselors in our schools have taken the crisis management skills training, as was specified in our crisis management plan. And two of our staff will be attending a national conference to be trained as trainers, so that's a good sign for crisis management in our county. And then also nutrition. In the nutrition end, the state has come out with some new guidelines for competitive foods, and what competitive foods are, any foods that are not sponsored by the lunch or the breakfast program, anything that's sold in vending machines and all that. So there are new guidelines coming out that we're not quite sure. They go into effect next school year. So April Plummer, our Director of Nutrition, is all looking into what the impact will be, so we'll keep you informed. I'm sure his form will, too. And that's it. And just finally, I really want to thank Mr. Miller, Roger Miller, for your comments.
Absolutely.
Because it really is, compromise is something that I think we as America as a whole needs to start doing, so I really appreciate your comments. And thank you for your leadership in making that compromise.
And then, and for all you, that took the, gave us the opportunity to be part of the process.
Yeah. And also, the real thanks should go to Dr. Jekk and Dr. Sandra Mitchell, who really led that. It wasn't, it wasn't like we rejected and they said that, did it because we said that. They did it because they heard you.
Ms. Rude?
No, I don't have anything to offer.
Okay, I don't have anything to offer? You got anything?
Well, that's probably a good time to mention the Senate bill.
Yeah.
I was contacted recently by the superintendent in Orange County, and they're in the same situation we are in other school divisions like ours, counties like ours, where the, there's land use, sort of tax breaks. And as you know, the local composite index is calculated based on the real value of property, not the tax assessed value of property. So in years past, I think this is something that you're, a bill that you're all aware of. Emmett Hanger from Rockingham County had brought this bill before the Senate, and it was passed by indefinitely by the State Health and Education Committee. So, long story short, Orange County is wanting to resurrect this bill, which would change our composite index from .5377 to .5067, which doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it equates to roughly $2 million in additional state money. So I've wanted to gauge the board's interest in perhaps handholding with Orange County, perhaps lobbying our senators, and perhaps meeting with Senator Hanger to gauge his interest in reintroducing this bill before the Senate, because it would be a tremendous benefit to our county. It would not mean anything in terms of increasing the local tax rate, doesn't anything to do with that. It has to do with local composite index statewide. So I know there was some interest. I know I've talked to Mr. McCullough. There's tremendous interest on behalf of the county and the board supervisors. Just wanted to get a feel for the board's interest in pursuing this and perhaps lobbying those politicians.
Absolutely. We tried to get this done with the help of the SBA. We weren't successful that way, so maybe we can have some success going this way.
I would suggest that we form an ad hoc committee, and I nominate Sally Murray to be part of that committee, our subject matter expert on that particular subject, and partner with Orange to resurrect that bill.
I would wholeheartedly back that, yeah.
Right? Okay? Absolutely.
Excellent. All right, we'll move forward with that, then.
Thank you.
I'll report back in January.
Great. Okay. All righty, Ms. Kotov, you're up. Financial management report.
You have before you the report as of October 31st. We are third way through the year. Our numbers are very similar in our expenditures and revenues to the past two years, so we seem to be right on track. Textbooks are slightly less, but that has to do with adoption cycles. I did want to note that the Board of Supervisors has approved from our year-end request the funding for four buses, and the, our understanding is they will be considering it in January for the rest of our items for year-end. Any questions?
It wasn't that they said no, it was just that they didn't want to act on anything other than the buses.
Correct. There were a couple of things happening they wanted to wait for, so what they did is, our most critical need was to get the buses. They acted on that, like three or four other items for, under their revenues, and then said that it would come back in January.
Okay.
No, I'm Ms.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Downs with the Human Resource Department report.
Good evening. In front of you have a brief summary of the activities in the Human Resources Department. Currently, we have six positions, certified vacancies listed. Only two of them are still vacant as of today, so we're working on trying to fill those positions. And for classified vacancies, we have 10. We're still having great difficulty recruiting custodians, and we'll be looking to hold probably another job fair to see if we can get some people. probably another job fair to see if we can get some people to apply. And then finally, we had substitute orientation last Wednesday, and 48 attendees.
Okay.
Any questions?
How many, how many do we have on the substitute roles?
We have done a audit of our substitute process, and we have officially about 300 substitutes. Active, right. We scrubbed off the list. The list at one point had almost 700 people, but there's only 300 active that actually work and fill jobs.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions, anybody?
No.
No, okay. Okay, we move to consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that the School Board approve the following. Minutes of the November 11th School Board Meeting and the November 25th School Board Pre-Budget Public Hearing and Work Session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, French IV and AP, French textbooks adoption. Oh, that's it.
Motion and a second that the School Board approve the minutes of the November 11th School Board Meeting and the November 25th School Board Pre-Budget Public Hearing and Work Session, the monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, and the French IV and AP French textbook adoption. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and we move to information items, which we have a lot of tonight. You're going to do, you're going to be Dr. Mitchell.
I am.
Okay.
This is actually the second reading of this presentation. It does include a couple of more slides, based on some questions that were submitted by a board member. So without further ado, and I won't read the slides to give her bait them, I know people love it when I do that.
Well, Mr. Miller already did it, so.
Excellent. Okay, great, well, good to talk. As I said, second reading, whoops, wrong way. This is just a reminder again about asking for your endorsement. You don't have to necessarily approve anything officially, just asking that you endorse the program, or the proposition that we're presenting tonight. And as I mentioned, I'll include the two questions that were asked by Mr. Gorg. We have pretty straightforward answers to those questions. You pressed the wrong button, Ginger, sorry. There we go. The primary goal in this entire endeavor is essentially to create consistency within all schools, to make sure that there's equity and access to quality 21st century programming. That's the ultimate objective. I was, I was actually at the hearing at Warrington Middle School last year before I even started, and.
And you still came.
And I still, I still signed my contract, so. No, but it was, it was, the passion was obvious. And as I've said to the Board and to others, that's something that's happened nationwide since 1900, is the amount of time we have has stayed relatively static, but the number of things that we have to do, that keeps growing. And if you look at the list, actually, of the things that have been added to public school educators' plates since 1900, it's pretty, it's pretty phenomenal. But you can only slice a pie so many ways. So looking for equity and seeking equity is, it becomes more and more difficult, but that's what we've tried to do with this program proposal. As you know, we've, we've held public forums, reviewed teacher surveys, discussions, et cetera. We invited developers in to provide their own versions, and that was actually an outstanding exercise. We actually received seven different budget, excuse me, not budget, schedule models for middle school, sort of picked and chose the things that we liked, things that we thought were, were in the best interest of students, and there were some excellent proposals. So I'm glad that that, we sort of conducted that exercise and got those folks to the table, because they introduced some really good stuff, and stuff that was extremely helpful in terms of developing that schedule. The October 19th and 20th presentations, folks were, again, invited to come in and provide feedback. We had parents, some teachers, administrators, and they were discussing essentially those different proposals that were presented, trying to look for common themes, things that people agreed with. Here were the common themes that came from those meetings, included seven-period day, course, core courses from 50 to 60 minutes, and so on and so forth. And what, again, going to the music theme, there was agreement about having eighth graders, giving eighth graders the ability to choose music every single day, having sixth graders rotate. There was uncertainty, again, about what to do with seventh grade, and, but there also was great interest in getting, giving seventh graders the opportunity to take foreign language, which the, this committee, these committees felt were extremely important. Just wanted to mention the, another common theme, and this is of particular importance to the principals, and it was something that Ms. Mash actually mentioned, it's the, that academic focus time. So there was tremendous discussion about how to use that time, how to better utilize that time. Something I'm particularly interested in is the four-and-a-half or nine-week SAT, PSAT module. I don't think you can start too early preparing kids for those, those types of assessments. They're extremely important, they're more and more competitive, and preparation for those types of assessments starts earlier and earlier, and I think starting that in middle school is a wonderful idea. But there are also some other things that were sort of presented in terms of like, things like character education, project-based learning, STEM learning, and then also incorporated in that is remediation time for students that need remediation. The big question, the greatest question that came out that you're all, I'm sure, very familiar with, is seventh grade and what to do with seventh grade in terms of the music. So shall we allow seventh grade music students to choose between music and exploratory courses, or require all seventh graders to experience exploratory coursework? So we met, Dr. Mitchell and I met with all music teachers, or the music teachers who attended, and then also spent time with the art teachers and CTE teachers, got their input. Those meetings took place on November 13th and November 18th. They were good meetings, there were no hold-spared meetings. Folks were very upfront and honest about their opinions, very passionate about what they think should happen with those seventh grade students in particular, and so we took those things into consideration. Summary of the November meetings, these are some highlights from those conversations with the music teachers. The things, the piece that was probably most compelling for me personally was that last bullet. Seventh grade is an opportune time to build interest in music. Students have a lot of energy and interest at that time. Seventh grade is sort of a, not a cornerstone time, but a sort of a benchmark time for students, a great deal of interest, and so there was tremendous interest on the part of the music teachers to sort of take hold of that and make sure they're, are exposed, seventh grade students every day to music instruction. The next meeting, of course, was with CTE teachers. We talked to them, same sort of thing, sort of conversations, same passion, same tremendous interest in their programs. Here's what they told us, and what was most compelling, again, for me was, are in those last two bullets. We should not force seventh graders to choose between music and what we offer, we want them to be able to take both. Middle school's supposed to be about opening doors, we don't want to see the door shut in seventh grade for any student. So we've got, again, very passionate folks, very passionate teachers, and that's, that's really a blessing for us as Faukeer County Public Schools. We've got some people that really care about their subject matter, and are very passionate about it. So my decision for all sixth and seventh graders to take nine-week exploratory courses, and music students will take music every other day in sixth and seventh grade, and every day for eighth grade. That's what I'm looking to have the School Board endorse. These are some more pieces that, again, we're asking the School Board to take a look at and endorse also, PE every day, a seven-period day, core courses from 54 to 60 minutes, music every other day for sixth and seventh grade, every day for eighth grade, nine-week exploratories, and a dedicated time for academic focus and enrichment and intervention. And then, as I think, I think I mentioned the foreign language in seventh grade, that's important. Administrator tasks, tasks and decisions. We still have some work to do, there's still, there's still workshopping that's going to be required to shore up this, this schedule, and those are the pieces that still have to be shored up. The role of homeroom, the exact timeframe for those core courses, class change, change time should be three minutes, should be four minutes. Those are all pieces that still have to be worked out, but Dr. Mitchell is doing an outstanding job, and she'll continue to do an outstanding job working with these, the folks from the middle schools. And in terms of the questions about coming from the School Board, just wanted to, we included two slides here, how does the recommendation differ from what our schools are doing now? That's just a snapshot of the differences between left-hand column, what's recommended, and then the right-hand columns, what's happening now within the middle schools. And you've got a handout, which is a more exhaustive, if you saw that, sort of a more exhaustive matrix of what's going on now, and then what's, what's recommended. But those things mentioned in the left-hand column are things that I've just mentioned to you, so that's pretty straightforward. But middle school, currently, we're doing lots of different things. There's, there's, there is some sort of consistency and agreement, but then there's some other things that schools just do differently, which makes it tough, especially when kids decide to change schools or parents move, it just makes it very difficult for them. And then in terms of the reduction, does it recommend it reduce music, giving it the same emphasis as the other related arts encore courses? So we broke it down in terms of weeks, and as you see, the focus area in the left, the number of weeks in the middle column, and the additional, some additional information around the column, and you'll see that, except for physical education, music is significantly more time for students that they elect to take music than any other area, 72 weeks, sixth through eighth grade, and 108 for physical education. The next most would be foreign language if students decided to take foreign language in seventh grade. And this is a quote from This We Believe, and it's, it really gets down to the whole middle school concept, what middle school is supposed to be like. Middle school is a finding place, it's a time for students to explore, to gauge interest in different subjects, figure out where their skills are, figure out where their skills aren't. But it is, it is an exploration time, and I think it's important for us to remember that as educators, that that is the role of middle school. So that's it. That's my presentation, and I try to be more brief than Dr. Mitchell, and I'm usually successful. I think tonight is no different. But any questions? There was a lot of information in a short period of time. Do you have any specific questions for me?
Just, just one question. When Ms. Mash was, was speaking earlier, she had mentioned that we have two of the programs, enrichment and also seminar, that were very similar in nature and pretty much mirror each other. And she was, I guess, looking for some reduction or some consolidation there to allow more time for music. What consideration can be given to, to her comment?
Well, that's, that's time that is, principals in particular are wanting to preserve. I think we can do a better job in terms of how we use that time, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think what Ms. Mash was referring to was, that time can be used for, sort of as an enrichment opportunity, or it can be used for an opportunity to get intervention. So depending on what the needs of the student are, if they need help with math, or reading, or something like that, that those students can go to a classroom and be provided with intervention from a teacher in that core area, or they can spend that time getting enriched, having an enrichment opportunity in an area that they're interested in, or they're being directed to by one of their teachers, for example. And so what, what Dr. Mitchell's worked on with, with this committee is sort of identifying those areas that we would like to see students participate in, if they're able to, including things like PSAT or SAT prep, maybe some STEM programs, technology, reading, et cetera. So it's, it's sort of a, maybe a hybrid approach, but it's, it's the same amount of time, it just can be used differently by the students depending on their needs and their, their interests. Yes, sir?
I have two follow-up questions. One is, after receiving this, I noticed that for our exploratory coursework, we say it's going to be basically the same for every school, except we have ag at one school. Is that correct? Okay. Was that, or was that?
Cedarly.
Was that in consideration because it currently exists there, or was there consideration to including that in other schools as well?
I believe it's because it's where it currently exists.
The second is, when I did the math on adding up the number of hours between making the class time longer and standardizing time between classes, it looks like the school day for some schools will increase. Do we anticipate that, or am I, does, will there be time from other areas like homeroom that may be decreased?
Well, I was told there would be no math, but. No, there is, there wasn't, not that I'm aware of. I've not, I've not met with Dr. Mitchell in the last one or two meetings.
Okay.
But there's not been a discussion that I'm aware of involving extending the school day. It's just massaging the time that they have.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hadn't heard that, but I was trying to do the math to see if we're extending, because if you look at the existing now, some of the classes are 48 to 50 minutes with two-minute periods between classes, and we're looking to go three to four minutes between classes and extend each class period a longer period of time, when you look at that, it seems like the school day would be longer, maybe the time is coming away from some other period.
Yeah, it could be passing time, it could be, you know, time and lunch, although I've not heard that either. It could be the enrichment time, but I'm not aware of any conversation about extending, extending the school day. Because if we had, I'd guarantee you I'd heard about it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alrighty, Dr. Bergwin, new high school courses.
Could you command the chair, members of the Board?
I'm the one? Now I am. Dr. Jack, it, it takes two people to replace Dr. Mitchell, and so Dr. Jack did half, and I'm doing the other half, just, just to keep the record straight. I'm here tonight to go over the proposed new high school courses. With us in the audience is Jennifer Majorwitz from Liberty High School.
Jessica.
Pardon? Jessica, I'm sorry. Jessica, my apologies. And she can answer any specific questions about the first course that we're going to discuss, Women in History, if you have any questions. And also, Mrs. Pam Pulver is in the audience, so if you have any specific questions about the physics course I'm going to discuss, they're, they're the experts in that area, so I freely admit.
Yeah, go on, get your physics questions ready.
My, yeah, get all those physics questions ready, but don't, don't talk to me about that. First of all, Dr. Mitchell wanted me to highlight the fact that all three of the history departments at, at the three high schools very enthusiastically, and enthusiastically have endorsed the addition of this new elective called Women in History. And the work, the hard work that went into the discussion of the need for this course was led by Jessica, and Dr. Mitchell wanted to be sure that we thanked her for her, her efforts in that area. This will be part of a group of history courses called Special Topics in History, and it will be an addition to two courses that you've already approved, African-American History and the Civil War, and we think that this will make a nice complement of history electives for students that have an interest and aptitude in history. And adding the topic of, of Women in History will enhance students' understanding of the role that women have played. And if there's any questions that you have, as I said, we can, we can ask Ms. Majorwitz about that. The second course I want to highlight is Online Automotive Technology. This course, because it is taught online, can be taken at all three schools. It supports mechanical engineering and physics, as well as automotive technology, and our award-winning automotive teacher, Scott Freeman, will take this on, so you know that it's going to be a dynamite course. That's a little sidelight there, but I, I think I can say that with great confidence. Finally, the third new course is not exactly new, it's a polished-up version of a very old course that was approved back in the 1980s. We can't even tell exactly when that was, because it was so long ago. It used to be called Mass Media, and Mass Media at that time in the 1980s was generally about print media. But what we would like to do is revive the course to include the influence of electronic media, as well as print media, on the. to include the influence of electronic media, as well as print media, on the, on American culture. And one of the areas of focus would be the increased role of social media in today's culture through the examination of ethics, internet safety, and privacy rights. That new version of this old course will support the strategic plan that talks about increasing twenty-first century skills, and we believe that this will be a very popular course as well. Again, all three high schools and Southeastern are very interested in this course. I learned in the process of, of working with the teachers that the new English Department Chair at Southeastern has a degree in media studies, so he's very eager to participate in writing curriculum, and if you approve this course, we'll write curriculum this summer for that. Finally, the bottom, the last two courses that you see before you are for information only, it's not necessary for you to vote on these. The first is the redesign of the AP Physics course. The College Board is now requiring that Advanced Placement Physics extend two academic years, therefore our current AP Physics B will now become Physics One and AP Physics Two, and will extend two terms rather than one term. So that's just a redesign of an existing course. And then, second physics course is Physics Concepts, which already exists, but it will no longer be considered a lab science, and, and as you read, it, it just doesn't have enough lab content in order to be considered for an advanced diploma. So emphasis is on practical application in physics foundations, but students who are pursuing the advanced diploma should enroll in regular physics, general physics, or AP Physics. No additional staffing is required for any of these courses, we think we can handle it with existing staff. Do you have any questions for me, or for Jessica or Pam?
I just had two. On the Women in History, the, the last line says, "Course enrollment or availability may be limited for staffing purposes." What does that really mean?
Well, that statement is true of all of our elective courses, and first of all, we put the course in the program of studies, and then we see our students interested in taking it, and there's a break, breakpoint when there are enough students to consider offering a course. Some cases with some AP courses, the number is fairly low, but in, in other cases, it's higher, so that's one factor. And before we propose a course, we, we survey the teachers in each of the schools to see if there is interest and any required certification that would be necessary in order to teach the course. So right now, there are teachers in place in all of the schools to do this, but if we should have a change in staffing, it might mean that there's not a possibility to do that.
Okay, and then my only other question is about the re-categorization of that physics lab.
Okay.
Are there students who, like, took this previously and are thinking we have a lab for partners for an advanced diploma, and now they don't?
Pam, you want to?
I would not be interested in that. Do you not want to take some separate quizzes, these are two, these are two.
Oh, okay, so they wouldn't?
Anybody who's taken one, or you don't have?
Right, yeah.
So do you have any students that are?
No, we wouldn't take something away from someone, I mean, in good faith, if we're offering it at the time, and that they take it at that time, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that. I can't think of a situation where that's ever happened.
That's good to hear. Anybody else, questions?
Yes, about the special topics in history, what target grade levels are we looking at for those?
For Women in History, it would be eleven to twelve.
Both eleventh and twelfth.
The idea is that some of our other special classes would eliminate seniors and be, it gives kids a significant limit on their opportunity, so we're hoping with eleven to twelve, that maturity there, who's still in, with the women's.
Great, thank you.
I might say, with the media literacy, we're, we're considering opening that up nine through twelve, because there is, in the new version of the English Reading SOLs, there's a fairly strong media literacy strand in there. I know a lot of eighth graders will be doing some of the components of that, and so the, the thought is, we, they would be ready as ninth graders, if they had the background knowledge from eighth grade, to take that if they had room in their schedules. Typically, students have more room for electives as juniors and seniors after they get some of the required courses out of the way.
Okay, anybody else?
That's good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for helping me out there.
Okay, Ms. Parkinson, the 2014-2015 calendar.
We're coming to you a little bit earlier, Madam Chair and Board Members, and Dr. Jack, than we usually do with the calendar proposal, at your request that we do it a bit earlier. Tonight you have before you the two proposed calendars for school year 2014-2015, and as you know, this year, in response to ongoing interest in the new model, we prepared a calendar, known as Calendar A, with a structure new to our county, with the main difference being that the end of first term falls before winter break. The purpose in ending before winter break is twofold. Many educators and citizens have often complained about the fragmentation of our current January calendar. Secondly, we believe that the winter break provides a natural point of closure for planning, teaching, and learning. Here is why. Our students K through twelve will benefit from having completed their units, tests, or exams before the winter break, and teachers and administrators will have embedded time during the break to close out first semester, prepare for second, and perhaps participate in professional development opportunities. The second calendar you have before you, Calendar B, basically mirrors the schedule that we have followed in recent years. As just a reminder of the calendar process, once the two calendar drafts were developed, they were presented to senior staff and all twenty principals back in October to see if they detected any instructional or other issues that might have merited revision at that early stage. On November fourth, the draft calendars were shared with the Superintendent's Advisory Committee for Educators and Staff at their monthly meeting. ACES includes a representative from every school. We asked the ACES reps to take the calendars back to their faculty and staff to seek out comments over the next month through December fourth, and we also sent the calendar drafts via email to all FCPS so that every employee received the two drafts. Then two days later, on November sixth, the calendar drafts were shared with the School Support Council, which includes a parent rep, as Mrs. Wolf said, from each school. We asked the council reps to receive comments from parents at their school, also until December fourth, which was the date of their next regularly scheduled monthly meeting. This was a bit different approach to get calendar feedback from parents through the School Support Council. On November eighth, the calendar drafts were posted on the School Division website. We sent out a news release to local media that the drafts were posted, and in the release we provided a list of the School Support Council contact information, so parents would know where to share their comments. We also provided a chart that compared and contrasted the two drafts. In addition, we sent the news release via eNotif, which as you know is our subscriber-based opt-in email service, and we also sent the drafts via Global Connect email, so that every parent who's provided an email address into the student database through the student's emergency card received the information. Dr. Jack mentioned at your last meeting that the calendar process was underway and that comments were welcome, and as you know, videos of your meetings are on YouTube, so hopefully that had a wider audience as well. After receiving comments from their colleagues for a month, ACES reps sent their summaries to me by last, by the December fourth deadline, reflecting the calendar preference information and the employees' comments regarding either calendar. And then Dr. Jack and I met with the School Support Council that evening to receive summaries of the parent input from the council. An examination of the numbers and the comments indicates a preference for Calendar A at a slightly better than three-to-one ratio, and if you would be interested in reading the individual feedback, I'd be glad to send it to you. However, you have a calendar feedback document that summarizes the comments regarding both calendars, along with some recommendations that came in from folks. Dr. Jack plans to make a recommendation to you tonight regarding the calendar, but I want to note first that Calendar A has been revised slightly from the calendar that's been circulating, in response to some very valid concerns and suggestions that surfaced in the ACES and School Support Council meetings. First, many, 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 many teachers were opposed to having a full school day followed by parent-teacher conferences. Besides the grueling schedule, they said the schedule simply did not provide enough time to accommodate all the conferences within the hours provided. Therefore, we changed Monday, November third, from a full day to a half-day of school, coupled with parent-teacher conferences from one to eight p.m. that afternoon and evening. And while, sure, repeat that? We changed November third, which is a Monday, from a full day of instruction to a half-day of instruction, coupled with parent-teacher conferences from one to eight p.m. Now, that's still a long day for teachers, but it does provide a half-day's instruction, and it provides ample hours for conferences. In addition, that long day is softened by making the following day, which is Election Day, on Tuesday, November fourth, an at-home teacher work day. Secondly, we changed the second-term parent-teacher conference from Monday, April sixth, to Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, from Monday, April sixth, to Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, because parents and teachers alike felt that the conferences needed to be held earlier in the term, and that date is one that the principals felt would provide more benefit. In making that change, we reduced spring break from six to five days, so it'd be March thirtieth and thirty-first, and then April first through third, and we would capture Monday, April sixth, as a regular school day, rather than a second parent-teacher conference day, which brings about a need for a change for twelve-month employees, so that their two holidays would be the Thursday and Friday before the Easter holiday, instead of Friday and Monday, which is our normal practice. The philosophy, finally, and text regarding the makeup days, which is shown in the center box at the bottom of Calendar A, is changed to read as this. "The first five days missed due to inclement weather are covered by banked time and do not have to be made up. The next five days missed will be made, I'm sorry, will be added to the end of the year in this order, June first, second, third, fourth, and fifth."
Okay.
Of course, no calendar is perfect, so as part of the calendar feedback, you'll notice summative comments that employees and parents made, both positive and negative regarding both Calendar A and B. "We have not been able to resolve the fragmentation of January on Calendar B. Likewise, we were not able to resolve several issues that the newer model, Calendar A, brings with it. For instance, we have included Veterans Day as a school day, which is not popular, popular with some, while others believe meaningful instruction about the observance of Veterans Day can occur if students are in school that day. I will say that if we were to include Veterans Day as a holiday, we would need to capture an additional day of instruction elsewhere in the calendar. We talked about the half-day the day before Thanksgiving, although that day is traditionally set aside as an opt-out day for certified employees who have met their professional development requirements on their own, and we believe that to lose this day would impact our differentiated professional development model, which we believe is a cornerstone of this county's professional quality." We also talked about capturing, if we were to make Veterans Day a holiday, we talked about making December twenty-second the Monday of Christmas week a school day, although we weren't sure how attendance might be impacted asking students to come in for that one day. Another issue we were not able to resolve was not being able to schedule in a professional development day during the first term. Some have questioned the need for school to be out on Monday, January fifth, as it's reflected on Calendar A, with students returning on Tuesday, January sixth, following winter break. The short answer is that high school principals request two days to turn the term, as you know, and the fifth would be the second of those two days. For those who wonder what course of action might be taken if Calendar A is adopted and we miss a significant number of inclement weather days, we've talked about possible scenarios. Options would include canceling exams, placing exams in Term Two, delaying Christmas break a day or two for high school only, or for all, extending Term One for one to two days after Christmas, scheduling state testing after Christmas, and leaving the time as is, just as we do for second term, when we typically get more inclement weather. None of these options are preferred or desired, but we've discussed the need to have some options. I don't believe, however, that that issue has to be resolved before we actually adopt the calendar. Once you formally receive Dr. Jack's calendar recommendation tonight as an information item, then the calendar that he recommends will be posted tomorrow on the School Division website for further public review. I'll send out a news release, we'll do the same notification to parents, to let them know that the recommended calendar is posted, so that parents will then have a month to review the calendar further and to contact their board members before you, before we ask you to take action at the next meeting.
We're going to take action at the January?
January meeting, is what we're requesting, that's up to you, of course, but, yes, at the regular.
The regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
Yes. Dr. Jack?
Well, you've stolen, you've stolen my thunder. I'm recommending Calendar A to the school board.
I had a couple of questions, I'll start, and I'm one of the people that's concerned about the January fifth day, I just think parents, for parents, working parents, that's going to be a difficult day where they've had to arrange childcare, you know, for two weeks already through Christmas break, and then we just add another Monday there. I understand the, the high school teachers, I understand that position, but I also have to think about all the parents who are looking for childcare, and I, I have concerns about that day. The other, I guess it's a question, is, would there be enough banked time, do we look at banked time semester by semester, so that if we had another December like we just?
You, you can. We look at bank time in terms of the nine-hundred-ninety-hour requirement, so if you look at bank time in terms of high school, or, or over twenty bank days, in terms of time, elementary, it's more like twelve, it's more like about a dozen. So that's, that's one way of looking at, you know, the calendar, the other way, of course, is just the days, but for a calendar like this, and with the recommendation related to making up days, I think that's the way to go.
And, and I really do have a question about why we would need to put in there that, why did we pick five days? And then after five days, we need to schedule, I mean, the big, one of the things was, we wanted to get in-school and then out-of-school by Memorial Day.
Right.
So then, if we're looking at adding days to push us back into a weekend of June, we're back where we started, almost, so is there, why is five the magic number?
I really think it's a function of the hours for elementary school.
Okay.
We're fine with the high schools, but I think it, it becomes questionable at, at a point.
After five, it does?
Well, they, yeah, they just.
Because I thought we had a lot.
They, we do at the high school, they just don't bank as much time at elementary.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I was concerned too, if I go in longer dates into Yeah, I just, I was concerned too about going longer dates, um, into June when one of the benefits of the calendar is that, you know, end before Memorial Day, and I'm familiar with several, several school districts in Virginia. I've never seen them have to go into that first week in June. So, I'm kind of hoping that, that's not something that we're going to see very often. And, and they're very, you know, rural counties that aren't, you know, crippled by snow when it occurs, just like we are, so, it's just an observation.
Anybody else? Nothing? Okay.
No, I'm fine.
Good. Okay, Ms. Born, CIP.
Yes, um, tonight, the ten-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-four is submitted to you for information. This is the same plan that we discussed here last month. Um, there is one minor change that we made, just a, a comment on page, the summary, page one, that, um, that directs the reader to, that there are attachments that, um, just, that provide cost and justification. Um, some people look at the front page and, and really don't realize that there are additional attachments that may describe the project in more detail. So we have added that comment to the first page. I don't know if it's in yours, but it is on the website now. Ginger was kind enough to add that today. Um, the project in this CIP are offered with the best information that we have available at the time it was prepared over the past several months. Um, Taylor Middle School is the designated, is designated as the top construction priority for the CIP.
Right.
However, as Mr. Gorg mentioned, the Finance Committee did raise some questions about the CIP and the planning process and the Taylor project, specifically with Taylor, that the cost estimates are getting old, the, um, the study was done, and this was actually raised by the Building Committee as well.
Right.
Um, the cost estimates were done in two thousand and four, which probably has skewed the numbers that we're using in the, um, CIP as it is presented to you tonight. Um, and also, that the middle school projects may meet, need to be looked at in a more comprehensive approach. So, while this CIP retains the Taylor project as the top construction priority, we do so in recognition of the significant need to update the school's aging infrastructure, um, that we need to improve the educational spaces at Taylor Middle School to be more consistent with our other middle schools, and also to prolong the life of that school. Um, at the same time, we recognize the need, that we still need to update this project's scope. Um, when it was looked at in two thousand and four, it has a scope, it may have changed now, and that we need to update the cost estimates, and we want to look at middle schools more comprehensively. So while we're retaining this as our top priority for construction, we are also acknowledging the importance of renovating the school while concurrently looking at Taylor within a more comprehensive framework.
Right.
So I think that may bring in, um, the questions that were raised by the Finance Committee and those of the Building Committee. Um, in meeting with the Finance Committee, it was suggested that instead of, um, addressing that it, this at your next regular meeting, that we move it to the meeting on January sixth, your organizational meeting. So if you're in agreement, we will place it on the agenda at the organizational meeting.
Sure, that's fine.
Any questions?
I'm okay with it, absolutely.
The only thing I wanted to talk about was what we talked about at our Finance Committee and what our concern was. And for me, being involved in public education since I moved here in two thousand and one, the CIP, CIP has always been an incredibly frustrating process, and what, I'll support this the way it is right now, um, but really what Mr. Gorg and I talked about was that we really need to transform the CIP as down in County as a whole. And we would, we were going to request that Dr. Jack meet with Paul McCullough and maybe try to create a group or meeting of, of us, a few of us and the Board of Supervisors where we could get a comprehensive plan on construction in the county that took, uh, because I feel like we put things on the CIP and just put it on there and it gets moving, where it's going to be in five years, and I think where Fokker County needs to go is a comprehensive, long-term plan for construction projects in the county that takes everything into consideration. And that's what we were hoping, Mr. Gorg and I were hoping we'd bring to the board that maybe you guys would support it.
Well, I, I...
Dr. Jack, do you?
I mean, that's pretty much what the FPIC it does, isn't it?
Well, we, as you may recall, and I'm not sure if, um, Mr. Blandwood might recall, um, because it goes back a while, we used to have quarterly joint meetings with the, the school, the school building committee, meet, uh, board, building committee, sorry, as well as the FPIC, which is the county's building committee.
Right.
Um, we haven't done that for years, and so maybe it's time to, um, start having joint meetings again. And as part of the strategic planning process, um, one of the initiatives that we are going to be working on that really helps us with this as well is to do a master plan, um, for all our building systems and construction.
Right.
And so we are going to be working on that this year.
Um, because I don't see how you can come up with a real comprehensive middle school plan without discussing with the county their office space needs. There's been conversations about Warranton Middle School being used as office space. I'm not saying that's happening, that was just kept around some years ago, and so I think it has to be a joint conversation. And so I would be totally supporting that, that process being put back together.
Okay, anybody else? Questions? Okay, you want to stay there?
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Okay.
Am I next?
Yes, you're next. PB Smith Playground Donation.
Okay, um, in accordance with School Board Policy three dash, three point one four, it states, "All gifts and donations shall be reported to the school board." And tonight, I have the honor of bringing you some terrific news. Um, the Friends of PB Smith Elementary School have engaged in a fundraising initiative, um, over a period of time to raise funds to upgrade the playground at PB Smith. Um, it's scheduled in the two thousand and seventeen CIP, and they would like to do it sooner rather than later. They understand that any donation would be given to you, it would be given for that purpose, but it becomes our, um, the money then becomes ours, and we own the playground equipment. Um, and we are going to do it consistent with School Division standards. Um, PB, Mr. Livisys has worked on standards for playgrounds, and PB Smith's playground is a little bit small for the school, and so in two thousand and seventeen, we would have expanded it. So they have raised the funds that includes an expansion, um, of that playground as all, as well as buying a major piece of apparatus that is a, a climbing structure, that's, um, net ropes that would, that, um, will allow larger kids to use it, so it will engage, um, and be challenging as well as, um, encourage kids to be more, um, healthy and active. So, um, the Building Committee did review this from a facilities alteration request and approved this update. Uh, phase, this is phase one of the project. They've raised the sixty thousand dollars that they will donate. It's my understanding tomorrow that they would write that check, and we would move forward. We actually have a meeting set with the vendor on Thursday to talk about the terms and conditions and how it meets our standards, and to try to iron out the details of the contract, and we are hopeful that if we can get all those things ironed out, that installation would actually take place sometime in January, weather permitting. So, um, if you have, um, no objections, then we will move forward with that initiative and thank the Friends of Smith for their, um, really strong effort in raising funds. I'm telling you, they're a money-making machine. And phase two would be something that we'd bring back to you separate. It will, they'll still have to raise funds for phase two. Any questions?
I want to thank the Friends of PB Smith and all the parents who contributed to that, uh, that goal.
Well, and they've been very, um, encouraging of trying to get this in so that while those fifth graders are still there, they can enjoy...
Enjoy it, absolutely, absolutely.
Well, it comes with the recommendation from the Building Committee, so Duke and I are good, yeah.
And I'm sure it's from the Finance Committee too, right?
Yes. You're good.
Thank you.
Good, good. All righty, thank you. Okay, Ms. Downs, we're going to bring this thing back one more time.
Yes, I think this is my third time.
I think so.
So tonight, I'm requesting that the school board adopt the resolution to award the short-term, long-term disability insurance contract to the Standard. This is the VACORP recommendation. As you know, um, the school board elected to opt out of the Virginia Local Disability Plan. We did that back in October, and we then reviewed two insurance companies. One was, um, VML's Lincoln Financial, and the other was the Standard, and the Standard was the clear frontrunner. So I think that asks that you all approve this and move to action this evening. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Downs?
No.
All right, then, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the school board move information item number...
It's already actioned.
Oh, it already is?
Yeah, it's there.
Oh, we don't have to move?
Twelve B.
Don't we have to?
No, it's on action as number, uh...
I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, keep going, Charles.
I move that the school board move information item number eleven F to action item twelve B for consideration for approval this evening.
Second.
Motion and a second, that the school board move information item number eleven F to action item twelve B for consideration for approval this evening. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no. Motion carries, we move to action items. And?
And I'm going to do this one.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to, uh, move forward with a motion that the school board approve five full-time bus aid positions to support the transportation services required by the current student needs.
Second.
Motion and a second, that the school board approve five full-time bus aid positions to support the transportation services required by current, current student needs. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and we move to the next item.
Madam Chair, I have motioned that the school board adopt the resolution to award the short, short-term and long-term disability insurance contract to the Standard or VACORP.
Second.
Okay, go.
Motion and a second, that the school board adopt the resolution to award the short-term and long-term disability insurance contract to the Standard or VACORP. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and we are done with them, finally, I believe. All righty, before we adjourn, anything else to come before?
Everybody have a happy holiday.
Okay, then, I will...
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.